This conference will now be recorded.
Time is now six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the Pilton Planning Board meeting. It's a workshop tonight and it is Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. And on our agenda are zoning amendments for 2023. 2022, sorry. But actually, it's for 2023.
Oh, right. They called 2022, right?
Yeah. Okay.
All right. What do you have?
First one is the 100-year storm. We definitely need that. It's not in our...
All right, we have, right, so you want...
So we want an update. I think it's 50 years in the zoning as they exist now.
So, I mean, you want to make a, I mean, you're gonna talk about it or are you gonna vote on it?
Well, I mean, we've been requiring it for a long time.
Okay.
And all of a sudden, somebody brought up the back, "Well, that's not in your ordinance." So I think we need to put it in there if we're going to continue to do it. So I'm going to open that up for discussion.
I know we've always asked for the, you know, the calculations, the information. It's become more prevalent that we get these oddball storms. So when you say change it 100 years, I'm not sure the way it's worded.
I think it's worded 50 years, isn't it?
That they must, that...
Yeah.
Provide the calculation.
Yeah.
Provide the calculation or must meet? I don't know what it says.
It might even only be in the regs and not in the...
If I looked it up, not Canade, but I looked it up in the pack from that.
Anyone bring their ordinance? There's another package to copy if anybody wants to.
I'm gonna slide down next. Oh, I'm sorry, you want it?
Well, you could look at it.
I do see very little work there under 50.
50.
I'm looking underwater. Do you think that's where it is?
Stormwater, yeah.
Bloodway.
Or drainage or stormwater.
100-year flood. See base flood. 13 dot 1 dot 2 2. That's just 100 years.
Special flood hazard areas, show.
It says, see base flood, which is where.
13 dot 2 2, you said.
See, that's what it says here. See base flood. Base flood means a flood having 1% possibility of being equaled or exceeded in any given year.
So is this one?
I don't see it there. Is anything there?
I remember something that...
Well, I looked it up before and I was born. It was 50. Well, maybe this is it. Maybe it's 100 years.
I guess we can sit to review for that.
See here, it's noted in two different places. I don't see anything in there.
No, I don't. And I don't know why we were, people were challenging mentioning 50 years, but also use the 100-year. These definitions. Protection.
Anything?
No.
I think I found was in the...
Couple of references to...
The 100-year elevation, right? 100-year storm elevation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw.
And I searched 50, I searched storm, I searched 50-year. Under. Building inspectors, 100-year flood elevation determination. Please a criterion zone AE. All new constructions and substantial improvement of non-residential structures have the lowest floor elevation to or above the 100-year flood level.
Yeah.
So anything about runoff or...
I'm a draw through here. There's nothing in here.
Where newer replacement water and sewer systems, including onsite systems, are proposed in a special flood hazard area. Building inspector with assurance, these systems will be designed to minimize the eliminated or eliminate filtration of floodwaters into the system and discharge of systems into the floodwater and onsite waste disposal system. I think the 100-year is mentioned in the conservation...
It's under building inspector. 13 dot 1 2.
Yeah, I just read that. That was written.
Okay, yeah.
That's when they build, they have to show that they're above. But that's not what John's talking about.
No. Oh.
I guess, you know, the runoff, I'm not sure. That might be a state thing.
We've always required it, though.
The calculations for, I think, and a lot of people now are doing it.
Yeah. The one we had where there was a question, he said he would just redo the calculations. Not with hard candy in here, there's not.
I don't see.
Should we include something or not?
You can always ask for it when you do your site review or...
Even if it's not in the ordinance.
Right.
Okay. We could just continue to do that, I guess.
Yeah, unless, what kind of deadline are we on?
Yeah, if you talk about that, if you find it or want to do, we still have time. So I'd love to come up with some of the, whatever we come up with, I'll help with the draft. So the last day to post and publish notice of public hearing on the zoning amendments is the 31st of December.
So we...
The last day to hold a public hearing, prior to your first public hearing, is January 12.
So we have voted on anything, yeah, next meeting we'll make sure we get...
If you find anything you want to look through again. I mean, I have some stuff we need to go through still.
So...
If you want to look more into that 100-year, you can.
Yeah.
And then the last day to hold a final public hearing is February 6. And it has to be, the proposals have to be placed on file with the town clerk by the 7th. That's the last day.
What do you have planned?
So the zoning board has requested that you change or that you make a proposal to change the... Well, first, let's go back. First one I have, here, I can pass these out. These are a little...
Mobile home stuff? Mobile home stuff?
Well, yeah, I have mobile home on there. But the first one is just a correction. The first one is, we had, I think we did this too when it was oversight. The first one is the setbacks. We had changed the setbacks in an amendment, I think. Let's see, last year or the year before.
I think it was the year before.
So on any lot, the problem is the accessory buildings, like sheds.
Yeah.
We changed it so that over 200 square feet, you have to meet the full setback of whatever your zone is. But if the building is under 200 square feet, it was 10 feet. So if you have a small lot and it's just a small building, you only had to be 10 feet. That's what the ordinance says now. But when we worded it, we said over 200 square feet, you meet the total setbacks of your zone. Under 200 square feet, it's 10. But what do you do with 200? So we should have said 200 and bigger, right? Because if you're 200, well, my older...
Greater than or equal to.
Yeah. So this is just a change on any lot, an accessory structure, which is 200 feet or greater.
Okay. Okay.
May be erected and maintained only within the building setback. So we're just making it 200 feet or greater. Under 200 feet, 200 square feet, it's 10 feet.
Okay.
Okay. So that's just kind of a clarification. Obviously, we bumped up against that when we had something that was 200 square.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Okay, no objections to that. I'll just rewrite that and present it in a formal motion. The next one is manufactured homes. So right now, you have your ordinance. Right now, it is ambiguous what the intent of the ordinance was. The ordinance reads, "All manufactured homes installed after..." Let me read it right from here. "All manufactured housing installed after 112,000 must meet the specifications of standards established by United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as of April 1, 1995." What does that mean? Well, I went back and watched some video and read some minutes. And everyone in the meeting, the zoning board at the time, when they reviewed Gaslight Village, said that means that it has to be a 1995 or newer home. That's the only way it can beat the standard because there is no HUD inspector. You can't recertify. The only way it can be certified as 1995 is we built in 1995. And that's what they all discussed on the video. But this doesn't say it has to be 95 or newer, and someone's challenging that. That doesn't have to be a 1995 or newer. It has to meet the standard. Well, there's no way to meet the standard because there's no specific 1995 standard. So when they were talking, they even said in the video, it was Dari at the time and Busner, and they said, "This ordinance is outdated" because it says 95 because it's so old. And they were concerned that if someone wanted to put Gaslight was the project they were talking about, putting more sites. And they said, "We want to go one step further, make it a condition of approval that they meet whatever the newest ordinance sets." Because usually your grandfather, right? When you get approved of zoning, if you change the ordinance later, they don't have to meet that newer timeframe. And they said, "Well, this is so outdated that we want to make sure they have to meet the newest ordinance." So they put a condition that whatever the ordinance is in place at the time, they made that a condition. Well, we never updated the ordinance. It's still 1995 or better. So we either have to change the, in my opinion, we either change the year or make it clear what year you want it to be, or say, "No used trailers moved into town." Because once they move into town, there's no way of qualifying, even if it's, even if it's, we'll say it's a 2005. Who knows what kind of care they took? If it's got a roof on it, if it has steps, if it's, you know, there's a lot of criteria.
They could have taken off-site. Completely did something in the backyard, no building permits, nothing.
Pull things out, strip it.
And brought it back in and say...
Just because it was built...
And it doesn't even have to be a mobile home.
Yeah.
Right. There's no standard anymore. Once, you know, once it leaves that, whatever they get. Now, an example, obviously, that we bumped up against was this one over at Gaslight. And the thing is, didn't even have a roof. They're putting steps on it. They're not doing anything to code. They don't even have permits. Their argument that it doesn't say it has to be 1995 or better. Well, the zoning board, since they saw the new minutes of the hearing and they saw the intent of the ordinance based on the interpretation of the zoning board when they reviewed Gaslight Village, have changed and said, "Have upheld that this means 1995 or better." So that was a 1988 trailer. So that, they've applied to that. But they also said, "This is something that needs to be clarified." Because if they're going to rule, the zoning board, on the letter or the wording in here, it doesn't say it has to be built after 1995. It just says it has to meet a standard, and that's kind of a big whisper them too.
And I tried looking up the 1995 standards. There is, no, it's...
Well, that's not what they meant.
Yeah.
But they worded that way because they wanted to meet HUD standard and they wanted to be after 95. They just, I think they just they all knew in their head what they wanted, but I think they just wrote it.
The other thing I was thinking about that, to have the year, just specific, not standard, but the year.
Or no year. It's only new, one or the other.
Well, I mean, people, they close down parks. Some of these can be...
What year do you pick? You're gonna have to keep updating it. I mean, this is the discussion you guys are having. This is your parks, your places.
The thing is, is I think some of the key things that they did in building and in mobile homes and all that was like the aluminum wiring, the wiring and the windows and energy efficiency, wall studs, sizes and all that. Previously to a specific year, I don't know what it is, they had aluminum wiring and those things all failed and they're still out there. They have walls that collapse under snow loads, could bend from down south and doesn't meet it.
Yeah.
And all that. So I don't know what the specific year would be. I don't think everybody should have to have a brand-new one.
To bring it into town, though?
To bring it into town. They could, you know, purchase something that was 10 years old.
How do you certify it, though? How do you make sure that it's in...
So and the thing I was, now, they all have to have serialized numbers on there. They all have to have...
But again, yeah, but it still can be stripped, still can be in disrepair.
And the other part would be, that would be inspected. And any alterations, that they should have copies of building permits and inspections form from the previous location. So if you moved it from Belmont and you did an addition to it, you had a roof put on it. In order to do that, you'd have to have a building inspector do it. To do it legally, you'd have to have a building permit and a building inspector would have to approve it and they'd have a record of it.
Right, but the building inspector won't certify that it meets HUD standard.
No, but that's what I'm saying. Go with a date, a specific date that we can draw the line, nothing older than.
But it couldn't be, not a date. Nothing older than, let's say, five years.
Oh, that's another way of doing it. Rather keep changing. That's actually a good idea. Rather keep saying 2005, 2010. Say nothing older than. Then you're at least more current. That's actually a good idea, Jay. Right?
Yes.
Whatever that number is, whether it's five years, 10 years, two years, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking more...
Or they go, or they go for marrieds.
Yeah, yeah. Or like 10 years and have to have any alterations or to it.
A lot can change in 10 years.
A lot can change in 10 years. Those things don't...
Yeah.
Especially with a mobile home.
And you've moved it and you, you know, I just, I mean, that's my opinion. Again, to you guys that wanna, this is, this stuff is junk that they're bringing in, I'll tell you that. It just looks like it's two units.
I wouldn't use it for a Bob house.
I grow through.
She's got, she's got a certification that it's HUD standard in 1988.
When you look at all, go just right through there and look at what's in there.
Right, but once they're there, you can't, you know...
I know, but I'm just saying.
But why let more junk come in? I mean, it's old, the day, it's like a car, right? It's at the value and the day it sits, it's not like a house. I'm just, you know, if you want to allow some used, you're right, maybe you go with nothing older than.
Older than. And the other part is, is if they, if they have done some type of building, I think it should be, because if somebody does a...
But how do you know?
An alter, have them provide...
I know they did an alter.
I know, but how do you know that?
Well, first...
Well, that was obvious. Something had to be done or not done. Excuse me, bud.
An inspection and, you know, if it has a shingle door on it or...
Where is it? I went through there looking for it and I don't know where it's located.
Right up front.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I thought it was a Bob house.
Yeah, it's bad. It's bad. And she's coming for a rehearing because they denied on the rehearing. So now she's...
I would say not more than five years. That's...
I say the same. Yep, five years is good.
Yeah.
Yep.
John, you're saying 10 years.
Yeah. Just, you know, time goes by real quick, but...
This is them working on it with no permits too. But if you look, like, what is that? That's not a trailer. There's like...
Seven edition?
I don't know.
Those wheels under that.
Right.
It's almost like a construction office or something.
It could be what it was originally.
Yeah.
Also two, that's not one unit.
No. It's too long for one unit.
That deck isn't being put onto code. They don't have any permits for that.
What isn't code?
Why are they putting that on a trailer? I don't know what the, you know, nothing's, you know.
A lot of questions to address.
But this isn't even right. This is just, I mean, this isn't really the, we're not writing the ordinance for that, but we're writing the ordinance so we know clearly what's allowed here because it caused, spent a lot of time, the zoning board going back and forth on that.
That was, and people were horribly rude about it. It was, if you watched that meeting, I've never seen anybody be, I don't know how you guys...
Yeah, they were bad.
They were very rude to them, extremely. They're jumping up and like screaming and...
They hear how they talk on the phone.
And then one...
They jump the F at us. They tell us, yeah. They tell me I'm, you know, I'm out together. Yeah, whatever. So that's, but there's no, yeah, there's no standard. So we need to, we need to be a little clear about what we're gonna allow because they're tricky.
You know, I can go with the five. If I see anything that changes from that, I'll bring it up at the next meeting to, you know, to change it.
So...
Yeah, but it's five, and I think any alteration should, that they should have copies, provide copies of building permits and inspection.
More than five.
Installed after, we'll say after this will be 141 4123, right? 41
Yeah.
2023 must meet standards set by the, and HUD and cannot be... I'm just gonna be careful. I'm just gonna be careful.
Can we say something about any alterations? Can we say not more than five years, provided no alterations have been made?
Well, I, I'm thinking, go with the five years.
Okay.
And then the, any alteration, if somebody moves a deck into town and they say, oh, that's attached to it, or hinges up or something, or. They put, they build roofs on these things that they just kind of.
My uncle.
And you have to get a building permit to put that roof on it. They put a regular shingle roof on it, you know, they pitch true. Yep. And in order to do that, you have to, when, if you were in Belmont, you were going to do that, you would have to go and get a building permit. And have it inspected, and make sure, you know, the carrying walls and your joists are spaced out right and your structure. And they would have to get the building permit and have it inspected by Belmont, and they'd approve it, and they file it. The owner of that could go and go to the building inspector, town office, and get a copy that that was inspected and approved. And allow it, so that they're not moving in, they take something and they. Change it in somebody's backyard without a permit outside of town, and then move it in. To avoid having our building department do the inspection or anybody inspecting it, so.
Well, it does say, no, I, I added, no manufacturing home may be moved into the town of, what was Hudson? They had that on theirs, well, they had, Hudson had, had this in their regs. In Tilton. Or be placed on a lot unless it has been issued a permit from the building inspector, so make sure they know that they have to get a permit before they even move it into town. Can't move it into town, like, they moved into town and then can't get building permits to renovate it.
So, yeah, a permit to even enter the town.
I'll write something with five years, and it will say that it has to meet, has to get a building permit before it is even brought in. And it has to be on a path, that's by code though.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of codes with that stuff. Now, you say before it's put on a lot, should be put or stored?
Well, they're not allowed anywhere except.
I don't know if you run into that, where somebody moves in, um, a mobile home.
You can't put a mobile home anywhere but in a park.
What the.
No manufacturing house should be located within the town of Tilton, except in a manufactured housing park or a manufactured housing park subdivision. This section is not intended to interfere with the sale or display of manufactured housing in areas which is subcommitted, so.
Yeah.
It's saying, nobody's gonna have this in a park. Can't put it on your property.
I don't know how it works, but if somebody has a forty-foot-long fifth-wheel trailer and puts it.
That's an RV. I'm on an RV or a mobile home, two different things.
So, okay, so if somebody took a fifth-wheel RV.
Is it gonna have a HUD sticker that it's a mobile home? Different between a mobile home with a HUD sticker and an RV.
Okay, so they have a mobile home sticker, okay. I'm just trying to find any loopholes that somebody else could find before you do.
That other, there's another trailer. That's an RV, it's a mallard. And it's considered a recreational park. Home.
Yeah.
But it's meant for seasonal parks.
Trawling behind your car and camping.
Yeah, well, it actually looks, it's funny, it looks like a mobile home, but it doesn't have a HUD sticker, because it's a mallard RV.
Well, I know what they mean, they have a lot of parks like that.
But it's really meant for seasonal and not for, um. Picture of that, I don't know if I still have it, but, um. Anyway, oh, it's right here, see this, which is actually better looking than the one, this one.
Oh, I believe it.
Is a straight denial, because it's not a mobile home and has no HUD sticker. It's considered an RV. It's, it's for use in a seasonal park, not a mobile home property only be around.
The only one of those I've been to was in Maine, and quite a few of them in Maine. But you wouldn't know from looking that it wasn't a mobile home.
Yeah.
Except it doesn't have the HUD sticker.
Yeah, I assume.
Because HUD doesn't certify RVs.
That's what it tells.
So that's the difference. Now, we do, so, anyway, all right, so five years, I'll rewrite that for five years, and I'll try and put something in there about.
So, if you say has to have a HUD sticker, should you put a fix by the manufacturer, or a fixed at the time manufacturer, so that somebody doesn't.
Like, I don't think they can, they're pretty.
Like, I mean, somebody could go and take one, put on, or possess that sticker, so, you know, permanently affixed by me at the time of manufacture. I don't know if they have serial numbers, because it's.
Make sure you change that.
Aren't they riveted on though?
The Hudson.
Well, you know, somebody can. Well, I mean, you altered that, but that's.
With a serial number, I mean, yeah, there's a serial number, I guess if someone wants to pledge a serial number in the plate. I mean, if it's five years, if you say five years, I think, it's only five years, they'd be able to tell a five-year-old mobile home from that. Again, say no.
The HUD sticker has the year of the manufacturer on it, that's, that's a dead giveaway right there. See what you come up with, and then we'll.
Yeah.
They'll look at, I, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to poke any holes that somebody else would try and.
Right.
Argue with, because I, I want it to be.
Right, this is it, this is how.
This is it.
Yeah, so I can.
Because, yeah, that was.
It's awful.
Yeah, I took it twice, I think I saw. I didn't see it, right? Oh. Foot right by me. Yeah. Don't get your, don't get your blood pressure going, Tom, if you were here. You, you don't want to see my blood pressure going. If you were here, Tom.
We do have, no person shall park or occupy any travel trailer or motorhome on the premises of an occupied dwelling or any other lot which is not part of the premises. Of any occupied dwelling, except as provided the park. One travel trailer in a private garage building or any yard, just for our sensitive. We have an RV requirement. Yeah, okay, recreational vehicles, recreational, shall be in. Recreational vehicles may not be inhabited on a private lot for longer than thirty days in any one calendar year. Or be utilized for the purpose of establishing a rental dwelling. You can't put a camper on your property and rent it.
For thirty days, yeah.
I think the thirty-day allowance is like, you know, your brother-in-law comes up with his RV and it's gonna stay with you, and so he's gonna. Right, sleep in the RV for a couple of weeks.
But they can get a permit or something if they're burnt out of their house.
That's different, that's temp, there, there is a provision, temporary use six months to one year after fire catches.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's dwelling in a recreational vehicle. Recreational vehicle, that's right, we also have a provision, which was brought up because of Prop C's property. That you cannot park RVs anywhere in the downtown area.
What is the story with that mess down there?
He just, yeah.
Is he renting it, the space?
I don't know, he's saying, he's saying I'm discriminated against his tenants by even sending this letter. There's still an electrical cord running out there, and I could tell me this is.
Well, I keep close, I, you know what we're talking about.
Yeah, oh, you talk about another.
But, um, yeah, they, actually, you can only have RVs right now in the ordinance. With a special exception in the downtown area, because we can't have mobile homes. Um, so it's, they're allowed by special exception.
So can they, if somebody is coming through town. Stops in, you know, traveling through.
And when it stops in one of the apartments downtown?
No, stops in to go to T-Hop, Parks and Municipal.
Oh, yeah, I think that's just, that's just, you're driving, right? You know, you get a special exception to drive through town.
Well, not to drive, but, you know, you might want to get a pizza. Yeah, once you're on hook, it's, that's the.
But overnight is.
But if it's, let's say it's a.
No, overnight.
Class A or class C. So, so if you put overnight, maybe put, make sure it says overnight in it.
Yeah.
That way, nobody will be. To pack it downtown overnight? No, to not allow that. Oh, yeah.
What if they're staying at next door? What, what if they decide they want to stay at a hotel for a week? And they've been driving, I mean, you know, there's some people, that's all they have is transportation. A lot of retirees only have that for transportation.
Yeah. Special, special permit?
Well, I know, but who's gonna, they're gonna not. Joe Schmo isn't gonna drive through town and know he needs a special permit to have dinner and stay a night at the hotel.
Well, they, let's say. Um, Tom, but onions, they're, but Mishcon's old place I'm referring to, and, um. They rent out to the people with the boats, and somebody travels in from out of town, they tow their trailer with an RV, you know, a small class A or camper van. Can they park that in there while they're staying in the hotel?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so they should be, so that, that's what concerns it, if we see no RVs in the downtown district.
Without a special exception, that's how it's worded now. Anyone, anything else? The other things I have is, um. Right now, our wall sign ordinance, signs. Our wall sign ordinance says ten percent of the facade. What's a facade?
I think that originally was the window.
Well, facade is actually the opposite.
I know, I know, I know what a facade is, but I'm saying, I think that's what it originally meant.
Well, we should have a definition.
But we don't.
Of facade. So what's the, what does everybody else choose? I thought it was a front-facing wall.
It can be a side-facing wall too, can't it?
Yeah, I don't, you know, it's, it's tough for us to figure out ten percent of what, what.
I thought they had a total number of size, square feet of the actual sign.
So for the monument signs, I'll, I'll read you what it says. So mo, your monument signs are forty square feet, right? Your standalone freestanding signs. Your wall signs. Walmart wants to put Walmart on their building. All additional sign, signage and may be posted on the building, provided it is limited ten percent of the square footage of the facade. If you look up in the dictionary what facade is.
That's what I'm doing right now.
It means everything, your face, you take out windows, you take out doors, don't you?
Well, the face includes the doors, I don't say.
That's, so that's a lot.
Especially the principal front that looks onto a street or open space. An outward appearance that is maintained to conceal a less pleasant. Her fall, her flawless public facade matched private despair. The reason I say, if you go down Main Street. You know where Tryon Street is, goes to the fire department, between the church and. There's a painting on the side of that building. And it was a big to-do when they first put it up. It's been there for years now, it was that jewelry company that was there for years. I think that was considered a facade.
Oh, was it? Yeah.
Well, if you read this, that's what.
That's what it says there, if you read that, yeah.
So what's.
Are you comfortable with ten percent of a facade if we count the whole building front? I mean, so what's a normal facade, if you've got a building that's.
Well, as an example, if you have a facade that's thirty feet wide and twelve feet high. That's three hundred and sixty square feet. Ten percent of that is thirty-six square feet. That's a good-sized sign. That's a, that's a sign to knock your socks off if you have a barber shop. Or some, some form of a restaurant.
And you count, and then they put a window on there. Right, I mean, so now that sign is in the.
It's covering.
Covering the whole building. I'm just surprised it says the percentage of the facade, but I don't know, somebody must have thought that was how they wanted it.
Has this question come up?
Well, it comes up every time somebody wants a sign permit, how much can they have?
Okay, all right, I see. Well, look at, at the.
A lot of times it's a lot, and when you count as a facade, so like. Isn't as big a problem, um, at the Tilton outlets, because they're pretty much established where the sign is going on that. Overhang. But you count the overhang in the front of their store.
It's a front, front-facing wall.
The soffit, the, you know, so they've got that whole front panel that comes out, and then you go in the mall. You know what I mean, so you count the front, and then you count up that.
And, uh, same thing, the Shalimar used to have a big lobster's lobster house on the shingles, on the roof, that was.
Well, no, there's no roof signs allowed in. So there is a provision, no roof.
I, I have, I have to.
Yeah, it's all on.
Research and start thinking, I think we'll have to.
Sign went up and down on that, that Mason's alarm, and they put it up anyway, and.
So.
It was, nothing was ever done about it. It's a lighted sign.
Off-permit signs are not allowed, that's another thing we're gonna have to stop talking about, because off-permit signs, we got involved in that with the whole. The signs they have at Tangle Outlet with those charging stations. Roof signs are prohibited. No sign shall be erected or placed within a traffic median or right-of-way public sidewalk. All lights and sign structures shall be properly maintained, does not count public houses.
Said in, in this.
Page twelve.
When we updated the sign ordinance, didn't we just take Concord sign ordinance? It was only a few years ago that we did that, and I think what we did was just take the ordinance that was used in Concord.
Wow.
That was only a few years ago that that was done.
So.
Which when Julia was, sorry, Julie Tilton.
So it says. For businesses in downtown districts, signage will be restricted to twenty square feet till be located on the facade only.
Right, that's just in the downtown, yeah.
Okay, and then we look at.
Up at the top.
Mixed use. Not to exceed twelve squeetni, square feet in areas for buildings other than dwellings.
That's in mixed use and medium-density residential. Right.
And where else were good?
Well, then you've got all your business district. Next page.
Industrial.
Yeah, in commercial, it's forty, but that's. That's not a wall sign.
Not exceeding a total area of forty square feet.
Right. That's their monument sign, that's freestanding sign.
One sign pertaining to the lease sale or use of the premises on which is placed and not exceeding forty square feet. See, it doesn't even say, that could be on the side of the building.
Right, but then if you go back to the page one. Right, but then if you go back to the page one, 2.3.3 additional signage where needed may be placed on the business provided that it's under 10% of the square footage of the facade. You don't even really have a clear monument sign regulation. Because, but it also talks about the height, so obviously the height is a monument sign. Right?
Which is the 40 feet, right?
And it's not to exceed 20 feet above grade. I guess you're talking about the, I mean, I assume that's what you're talking about is a freestanding sign. Maximum height to top of sign, not to exceed 20 feet above the grade. See, if you look in, because it says each additional tenant of 1,000 square foot more is to have 20 additional square feet on the same aforementioned signage. So you're talking about a signage board, you're not going to put them on your building. So it's 40 feet, and in the event you have more than one tenant, you can add another 20 feet on the same aforementioned signage board. Maximum height. These are all, these are all, they're all talking about, again, not 100% clear, but they're talking about freestanding signs. Because they say signage board.
Well, it, that would be a structure, right?
Right.
If they put up a sign outside.
Right. And you really have nothing about wall signs other than that one 10% of facade.
So that is.
That's on page.
12?
12, the second one. Additional signage.
Yeah, that's making sense, additional signage.
I know.
Where needed, may be posted in the business provided it's limited.
And no place else is saying what you can have for a wall sign, just the monument sign.
And I'm wondering if what they were thinking about with additional signage was like when people put up banners? Yeah, I think the whole thing needs a a looking at. When's our next meeting?
Our next scheduled meeting is December.
Might have to do some homework and. A signage shall also include banners, commercial flags, inflatable signs.
Didn't we?
Well, no, that doesn't, it says freestanding nameplates or signs intended to promote or advertise a business commodity offered on the property or posted shall not exceed the specifications established in their respective district. Signage shall also include banners, commercial flags, and inflatable signs. So their total signage can't exceed the. It is.
Does, when does it show that the signage was last updated? Do you have a record of that?
I think it was 2000.
2003?
I think it was back when we added the portable and temporary signage.
Well, I was on the planning board. It didn't seem that long ago to me.
There might have been a few changes since then, I know, I remember that one.
Completely reworked the whole signage. And I thought it was like five years ago, maybe.
I guess, one of the things we'll have to, you know, what are we trying to achieve?
Right.
And what, how does this meet or not meet what we're trying to achieve? And what are the problems that you're running into with this?
And how do we enforce, know what you want to achieve?
So we're, we're trying to keep signs uniform and appropriate.
And a minimum.
Looking. Yeah. Not, um, you know, and I think it's, it states in here the purpose and it's to build the character of like the town and downtown and.
Well, we did have something that said no lighted sign.
Nope, it's not no lighted signs.
No, we didn't have it one time.
Or backwood signs, right? Didn't we have backwood or we had?
No, you know, the signs, the neon signs, like it's raving.
Well. Uh, it does say no blinking, right?
Yeah.
I think it was animated or blinking or something.
It can't be blinking, but at one time we had, we couldn't have.
And then animated, you just say animated and moving signs are prohibited. Is blinking moving?
Well, see, at New Car, they have all of that.
Yeah.
Which I find very distracting.
It's, it's extremely distracting. So, and, and on the wall, big one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing to do by any of those, though. I mean, this won't do anything for that, just on the line of the future.
That's all.
Rob Grandfather.
That's right.
And signs are a hot topic with businesses because that's how they.
Attract people.
But, and I'm not even saying that we need to make it more strict, we just have to make it more clear. We need, maybe we need to come up with a wall sign ordinance that not just 10% of the facade, that just seems like something threw that in there.
And where did they come up with 10%?
It seems contradicting of some of the other one.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to sit there digest this whole thing.
And those charging stations at Tanger are not, not even noticeable. I remember how concerned we were. They're barely noticeable, even when you drive in there. I guess if they had an electric car.
I saw, I saw a gas line cowpox and that was like, good for you.
You know, the ones by, um, the pizza place there up front, they had cones blocking them off for months. I don't know if they, what those called.
Where?
Over by, um, the burger place, um. Five Guys, yeah. There's.
Are they all pizza?
Yeah, in that little section there as you first pull in.
Yeah.
You're not functioning.
Yeah, they had cones blocking them off. Anyway.
So also, Joan, do you have any audience, I made a note. Building standards, you say that has to meet the current building code, you know?
I'm, for signs. See, additional signs, and I think the thing is additional signs where needed.
I know.
I think that's what's causing the problem is what was meant by additional signage.
And where's the wall signage ordinance? People always come in, especially new businesses, they come with two, they have a sign, you know, they have a monument sign and they have a sign for their building. And like, we go, okay, we can have 40 square feet or 20 square feet for your sign. And then your wall, I remember the first time I had to look it up, I was like, I don't know.
Make your choice, I think it.
Yeah, but everybody has something on their building, right?
I was gonna say, I don't think, I, I don't agree with that.
What?
Nothing on your wall, like Walmart, Market Basket, you know, all those places have signs on the building. I can't think of a building that doesn't have a sign on it.
And if I had a business, I'd want a sign on my.
Well, especially how would you, like even like pick a tanker, right? They got the big monument sign with all the stores, but then you walk through the mall, you gotta, you're looking for Under Armour, you're looking for the country store, you gotta have a sign on the building.
And then they have, then they have their logos on the, on the windows.
All right, well, if you want to talk windows, talk downtown.
Yeah.
Kidding, everybody, I think there's a competition, who can put the most in their window down there.
Yeah. So it's all.
And then what am I gonna do? Go down and start measuring their windows?
Those facade.
Huh?
Our windows.
Yeah, but again, how do I, you know, the 10%.
The sign or is it advertising? See, there's, and then, yeah.
Oh, you're right, you're right, yes.
Or is it art?
Or they draw, right, they draw on the windows, so they. And you know, and, and also, what are we gonna do? Go measure people's facades?
That doesn't sound very nice. I'm here to measure your facade. Well, look at the Vietnamese restaurant.
Vietnamese?
You can't see in there.
Right, it's so much on the windows.
Because they have part paper on the windows, which I understand because people don't want somebody staring at them while they're.
Well, I think the sun too beats in there. I think that's why I was going. That's why a lot of them have awnings, right? The awning blocks, the sun on, at the barber shop.
I know we have rules on awnings.
Um.
I think.
There is, uh, it's just that you, your awning, I just had the awning.
I had it too, that's why it came into my mind.
Awnings or canopies may not extend over two thirds of the sidewalk or six feet from the building base, whichever is less, any lettering will be considered part of the total signage. That's for downtown, we put on the awnings.
And I know that they aren't supposed to have those menu boards that they put out either.
Sandwich boards?
Sandwich boards, sorry.
Well, it's not supposed to be on the sidewalk, didn't I read nothing on the sidewalk?
Well, we have the narrow sidewalks anyway, that's why. That's ridiculous. We're supposed to have enough space for a wheelchair to go down the sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, well, it says, no sign shall be erected or placed in the traffic median right of way or public sidewalk. But you know, I mean, if we reinforce all the sign violations in town, it'd be a full-time job.
I was gonna say, you'd be only one person full-time for that.
No, you get them once and.
Well, you don't have to know who's grandfather, like that big lobster. I mean, they have to look at when their mom came into town and.
Which lobster then?
They said there was a big lobster on the Shalimar.
Yeah.
Who knows that they're not, just saying, that's an example, like, I'm going to go and say, take the lobster down, I'll be like, I've been up there for 40 years, right?
It doesn't make any better. See, see, they, yeah.
Like those machos that were down there? The little Mexican guy band down there?
Oh, God, I'm so tacky.
Yeah.
Anything else anybody can think of? I just, I have one question. I went to the Lakes Region Planning last night. And everybody there's main concern is housing. Do we have serious problems in Tilton with housing with our ordinances?
In what way? Oh, it's supply or ability to provide?
Supply, I'm talking about with our ordinances. Are our ordinances adequate?
Adequate to, to prevent it or to allow?
Oh, to.
We don't have an affordable housing, as it's like you're asking.
What?
We do not have an affordable housing ordinance.
With the housing standards.
That's what we have, and that is really about all we have, right?
The housing stance isn't about an ordinance, that's more about just making sure that things are livable, right?
And zoning, what you can build where.
Yeah.
We don't have an incentive for low-income housing or low-income housing ordinance that I know of. Lockmere Meadows, what, tell me about Lockmere Meadows.
What do you want to know about it?
Anything.
It's federally funded. There's section A housing in there.
Okay.
And they're absolutely gorgeous. And I don't think it's, when they first went in, it was a real serious issue. I don't think it is now. I think now the majority of people are, are.
People didn't like it?
Retired people.
Yeah, retired.
When it first opened, there were a lot of kids.
It depends who's managing it.
Yeah.
That, what they put up with, what they make for rules.
Their apartments?
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
Really nice.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
The last time I went in there with Mrs. D, uh, that phase two hadn't started yet. They'd go around in a big truck, and you'd come back already. And then, I don't know where it situated, but there's a, a box there for kids to get the school bus. So they don't have to stand out the weather. But anyway, we're looking over at the, at the future part of it. And we were just sitting there and all of a sudden there's a coyote coming right enough, you know, and so it's, all that woods is behind you, there's still some wildlife and backlight going on. I was pleasantly surprised at the quality of it.
Very nice.
Yeah, and, and they left a lot of, um, the foreign farm, they left it a lot in the middle of it and behind it and beside it. It's not like it's just, they just, you know, cleared everything down, flattened it out and built out, built.
That was a John Bernard project.
Yeah, I was thinking about doing that again.
And we, um, we did some pretty intense sidewalks out there and identified everything with the, um, conservation, we went out there, we found wells that nobody knew about.
Piece of property, we just bought a piece of property, uh, by Lockmere, by, is it next to U-Haul? Tom and Connie Road, I think it's, and it's on that side. I think it's adjacent to U-Haul, it is.
Another, another piece he bought?
He bought the piece, he did buy the piece, not a thing by it, he bought the piece west of the.
This side of U-Haul?
West of the U-Haul property. 60 acres west of the U-Haul.
Is that the one across the street from Valvoline and?
No.
Between the.
No, U-Haul's a little further down.
No, it's further down.
I'm trying to think, because if it's U-Haul, then it's.
U-Haul's where the road comes down, I'm not really good at.
I think there's, it's that house with a barn beside, behind it.
Yeah. Because U-Haul, isn't U-Haul right before you come up to the golf course?
Yeah, yeah.
So you come down from the golf course hill, if you're coming back here, if you're heading west, or you go past the golf course, U-Haul's at the bottom of the hill. And then it's the piece right next to it. Across from where, where used to be Greg Ward's or Gears or.
Yeah, the auto, a different thing.
It's that house, it's that big house.
Yeah, that's a house.
That sits in the middle, and there's a circle there, and there's a barn behind it.
He was looking at development, he was looking at ideas, and one of them, he had mentioned to me, he said he thought of Lockmere, and I said, so he said, what do you think about doing another project like that? I said, I don't have that money with Lockmere, but I'm looking to it. So, if you guys had any like.
People had a fit when Lockmere Meadows first went in. I've heard nothing about it.
You can't even see it from the road, right?
I have been in those apartments, and it's like I said, they're very nice. The grounds are well-kept.
So that qualifies, I mean, as far as the town being, um,
It's workforce.
Singled out as having no affordable housing. Singleled out as having no affordable housing. So you have that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, you know, considered affordable housing, and some towns don't have any of that, right?
Do we, do we have a, a, any kind of a property density, um, recommendations?
Yeah, you have to consider.
It's in, it's in our.
It's in, yeah. In other words, he can't, he can't, if he was to develop the property, uh, you know, he can't put, you know, twen- twenty-five hundred people on it.
That's not John wouldn't do that.
I know, I know.
No, he usually does, I guess, from what I hear, usually does a good project.
Yes, he does, yeah.
I know, I've been here long enough.
He, he's had a history, I would say. Twenty, maybe fifteen years ago, people had a problem with him. Since I've been on the.
Oh, really?
When I, when I first came on the fan board, everybody, oh, no, I've never had a problem with John.
Why? Do you do stuff people didn't like, projects people didn't like?
No, I don't know, because he.
Probably another time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, give him a group of people.
Okay, yeah, and where I am, we should be done. But I was just wondering what that was.
Yeah.
Um, we had some kind of thing for promoting people to provide housing, or was it businesses? Or improvements to their homes where they would get a tax break.
Right, that's in downtown, that's an incentive, that's a tax incentive. So.
So if anybody downtown does a major improvement on their building, they will not be taxed. On that for a period of three years?
I think it's, I think it's five years, and don't, but it's only on. The point is, like, if you improve your property, your assessment's gonna increase, right? So I believe the way it's set up is that, you know, your value goes from, your building's only worth four hundred thousand dollars. Cause they're disrepair like, for example, and you renovate it, and now it's worth a million dollars. That difference.
Yeah.
Of four hundred thousand to a million of six hundred thousand, that's six hundred thousand is given a tax break for five years.
So that, so it helps you get started.
I believe that's how that.
Yep, sure, that's, I don't, is that for housing too, or is it just businesses?
I think it's only in the district, I don't know if it's for housing, I know it's.
You know, let's say there's a couple buildings down here with second floors or third floors that don't, haven't been renovated. For housing.
Yeah, I still don't know, I, I thought it was by district, I think it would apply to housing as well, I have to pull the ordinance.
Yeah, just kinda curious, kinda like torn out there, no problem to nobody of that.
So we wanna. Take some time, maybe to think about the sign ordinance for the walls, see if we can fix that facade.
Think everything's sort. Yeah, makes sense.
Um, we'll look at rewriting. For five years, the manufactured housing, that's what we're, mobile home, I mean, not manufactured. Um, if we're going to leave it as the wall sign as facade, we should at least put a definition in the ordinance. So we can define what facade is.
And there was something else you mentioned, that was on page eleven, I think, or twelve.
What is it, John?
Uh, it was something else, it was like the first word, was that facade or, eleven or twelve? Additional signage.
On page eleven?
Uh, two point three three.
Right.
And, and what does additional signage refer to? Um, temporary signs or any signs at all, or?
Well, then it goes, well, you have a temporary sign ordinance though. I don't know what it means.
Or, you know, portable sign, so.
Well, you have a, all portable and temporary signs.
Cause that's all thing, it says additional signs limited to ten percent of the square footage of the facade, well, what is additional signage?
And I think that where additional signage has to go, it should just be, wall signs are limited to twenty square feet or.
Except that is, additional signage is what they're talking is limited to ten percent of square feet. So if you get rid of additional signage, then you get rid of the ten percent of the square footage.
But then you have no ordinance to tell me how much you can put on a wall. What's Market Basket gonna put up on the building? That's why Market Basket signs are so big in Walmart, so basically, it's ten percent of their whole front of their.
I was gonna say that, and what if somebody owns two, I mean.
But where else in here?
Two different offices downtown.
Where else in here does it refer to ten percent?
Nowhere.
Okay, so just that, two, three, three.
Right.
So there's.
And there's no other place it refers to wall, or the word wall.
No, no, but it says, one sign pertaining to leases on the premises shall not exceed square, total area of forty square feet.
On a signboard.
On.
That's on a monument sign.
That, no, that's, on that note, that's pertaining to the sales or lease, even to more. Okay, or use of the premises. Have to read through this. For each new, twenty additional square feet signage, ten square feet, maximum. So that seems to cover under the regional commercial. Says forty square feet.
Right, which means nobody can have a wall sign.
Well, they can get a variance for.
For every wall sign?
Well.
Cause everyone's gonna have a monument sign.
They can't, if it doesn't exceed forty square feet.
Right, but they're gonna put forty square feet on a freestanding sign.
But that's a monument sign, the forty square feet.
Say that.
Well, I know, so, okay, so I'll give you that, they don't say that, so if I come, I have a business in town, I have a. Wall sign, okay, I want a freestanding sign on, on the post of forty square feet. You give me that, and I say, well, now I wanna sign on my building, and I'm gonna say, well, no, because you use your forty square feet on your monument sign, doesn't say two signs. One sign.
That's what additional signage is, I think.
I don't know, it, it should say wall sign, usually, usually towns have a wall sign ordinance and a freestanding sign.
Here you go.
But if you're saying one forty square foot sign, is that, if, I mean, is that gonna be freestanding or on the wall?
So, like, for instance, when I had my store, I got, had to do the forty square feet, and I had on my, for my business. And I had that, I was not allowed to put a sign out front. So if you say you can, then all of a sudden, if people, everybody will start putting additional signs out. And how many signs do you need to have for a business?
Well, right, so if you wanna change them, again, it's your town, you wanna have just one sign per business, nothing on the building, or on the building and no freestanding sign.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that the additional signage.
Way it reads. But I don't think that's what it means, because you have Walmart, you have Market Basket, they have signs out front.
Liquor store.
You have all, every store that we have.
Car dealers.
Yeah.
It's, okay, so.
I almost can't think of a place that doesn't have.
I can't either, excellent dental.
Sure. But you, you know, what you have is if you allow people to put signs on the building, big signs on the building, and then build big signs out front. And then everybody's gonna start blocking each other's signs with their signs, like we had that, and. It, it just, it gets out of control.
But imagine like.
Had that down the stove shop and Bonzi's Antiques.
Imagine like shops, so, you know, you go down, you turn in to the property to Hannaford, we'll say, you're gonna tell me Hannaford can't put Hannaford on the building? You know, I mean, that just seems weird to me.
Everybody would have to get, you know, permit, you know, a, a special exception or something like that.
Which means every business is coming to the zoning.
Yeah.
But.
And filing an application for a hundred dollars, notifying all the butters, and coming before. Every business in common, what you think? I mean, I'm just, I'm.
Here's, here's the thing, is.
I'm with you, I think sign should be limited.
Yeah, I go through many towns in many different states, and some, they don't even allow site, signs over eight feet in the town.
Oh, yeah, and I think that's right.
Allow backlit signs.
We don't.
So now, what we've got going on in Tilton is we have people competing for how much sign they can get out there. And, you know, and they even block each other, and then they get, you know, what happened with that, was the stove shop down there and. Bonzi's Antiques, and they're arguing because one guy put a sign here, and the other one put a. Yeah. And it blocked his.
Exception, I, I, the only thing I can think of in there too, Bonzi's is a shot. It's a tiny little building.
But it was before that was, you know, and it was a sandwich shop or something, the antiques, yeah. But.
That's the only one I know that's ever had.
So we don't wanna just, we wanna be careful that we don't just over, just make it. So anybody, but whatever they want anywhere.
I don't think we allow that, though, do you think we don't allow that?
What?
Can let them just put whatever they want anywhere, any big business.
Well, ten percent. But yeah.
However, so, okay, so you have that they can have a total area of forty square feet.
Or a new business.
And then.
They would have. A, a new business or a new building, it would have a, a drawing with, with the dimensions of the facades. The su- the front view, the side view, and you, you take that from there, and the dimension of that, a percentage of that dimension. That's pretty, but if you.
You're talking about new stuff.
Right, that's new stuff coming in, retrofitting is a little bit trickier. Um, as John said, some towns don't allow anything above eight feet. And they don't allow a monument sign and a facade sign at the same time, but that's.
I haven't seen that too much, but I've seen, one thing Hoots did was they required the real nice monuments to those, you know.
Standardized, yeah, non-backlit, frontlit search.
Like concrete posts, granite post signs, you know, that kind of thing, not big high posts like you see.
So this, I, when I look at two, three, three, it says additional signage where needed, maybe posted on, on the business. Provide that's limited to ten. So. That would cover the front of the building, so they could have a sign, an additional signage. Maybe posted on the business, provide that it's limited to ten percent of the square foot of the frontage, so. Yeah, I mean, if somebody has the frontage, yeah, it would have to be, they'd have to split. And ten percent, so that would allow. That would allow the additional signage on the front, and then there.
Their forty square feet on the post.
I'm gonna have to think about this.
You gotta decide what a facade is too, we gotta make sure we're all agreeing with facades.
With the facade is, and it, it seems like it's the front-facing, street-facing wall.
Right, but the example I was trying to say with the, with like the mall, with the outlets, you know, they have, so you've got the front of the store. And then the roof kicks out, and there's the socket in the front, so do I add this and that? Or is that considered roof? It's not really on the roof.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, but they, you know, they're not a problem, cause they're designed that way, I mean, those little, that, the outlets is designed to have their sign. On every peak, right, every little store has their.
Fortunately, they have.
And they can't go any bigger than the space they have, but, um.
Yeah, it, it gets to be. You know, I'm. Marketing, the guy's trying to sell bigger signs will attract more people, and I want mine to be brighter and. Stand up, be more fluorescent or.
Every time.
And like you said, is animated blinking? That's the other thing we have to look at, blinking, blinking or animated.
I don't think we're allowed to behave.
Is scrolling blinking, is scrolling animated?
Do we have scrolling sign signs?
All those reader boards.
Well, I think there's also a signage thing that says how long that display has to stay on things, too.
I don't think we, we don't have that, do we? Is that in here? We have that, Hoots.
No, Walgreens.
Must not change.
Given an exception, I believe, Walgreens is the only one I think that does that.
Right, but I don't think in your ordinance it says that it can only be on so many seconds.
I don't know.
But Walgreens was one that did get a special exception, I think.
Is that ever changing?
Those charging stations change every thirty seconds.
But they're not really facing the road.
They're not, they're.
Well, it doesn't, yeah, that's irrelevant, but the fact is they change every thirty seconds, they advertise. Whatever they're facing, they're advertising for stuff that's not even in Tilton. They just keep going.
Then they wanna put a sign up that the public wants.
Oh, yeah, and they wanna change the billboards too.
Those weren't even in.
Did they come in yet?
No. They're gonna come into zoning.
Well, they wanted to put a big sign up.
They wanna change all the billboards to animated.
All the billboards, so there's four billboards going up the hill from Valvoline.
You know, the ones by the golf course across the street.
There's like four kind of trashy signs right now, I think trashy, they're all kind of old and broken, and old, old wooden signs. They wanna take them all down and put one sign.
And have a changing and backlit and animated, oh, and color. I, I'm strongly against something like that, I think it's, it's reduce the character of the town and, uh.
Be nice to get rid of those. Do you like?
That probably won't, what?
You'll measure if they put that one up at the highway department across from the.
That could, that could shut down, right, you guys.
Oh, yeah. So maybe we have to look at other sign, signage ordinances regarding changing signs, upside down.
I thought we had one on changing signs.
How many, I mean, how many seconds?
Well, you know, backlit or animated signs or electronic display signs. You know, or billboards that are electronic, we could make it so the billboards are only, you know. Like a billboard with the lights on, the old-fashioned, just one sign, that existing.
We have those on Wal-Mart.
Here's what happens. So, if you don't have that, they can go and change it to the new. Like a big video display, you know, something like this, but, uh, forty by sixty. And have it changing.
Oh, I know, yeah, that's.
Or if you go by major brands.
And I find it distracting.
I think it's work to do, homework. Yeah, so I, I get some notes, I'm gonna do some reading and.
Yeah, and we can, we'll put it on the agenda for, I don't anticipate that we'll have anything for January, so, or even December, I guess. Not January, January, due to a public hearing, so we probably won't have an, any applications, because that's right around the corner. So, we can do the same thing, come on to bring this back and have something.
You see, any, any, uh, like rough drafts of stuff that we can come up with and then work together to.
Finalize it, then we can have a public hearing on it.
Public hearing.
Cause then we'll have to have a public hearing on this, for the last day, for the first public.
When's that, January?
The twelfth.
January twelfth. It's not that far away.
No, it isn't, the last day of the whole final is February sixth, so.
That's a day after my birthday, we can't do anything then.
Okay.
And what's it, hangover day? Being up all night. Dancing. Carrying on.
All dancing.
Hold. So, I didn't know how far they're gonna get this season up at the, um, preserve. But they didn't put up any barriers at the boundary around the cemetery, and they're, they're like working over there and grading.
Alright, I'll talk, Chris.
Yeah. Um, I think they're aware, but, you know, the guy driving the truck may not know it, and there's a road that's, like a path that's through there within that. Well.
To the cemetery?
No, next to it, it's like a, like they're going, uh, somebody's, I, I did a drive-by.
That's maybe where they're parking or.
I don't know, but they should put, they're not supposed to disturb it in any way, and he's totally agreeable with it.
Yeah.
But the guys that. But the guys that work there don't understand.
And they, they're trying to figure out how to do the room too. Help with that.
Have you seen the dialysis? What?
I haven't.
The job they've done with that? Can you believe they've been able to do that?
Oh, I have.
I've been up there.
I've done it. You know?
That's not a great thing.
They're moving a lot of earth, you know. Lots, a lot of hard ground.
See, we, that was one of the first sites for the police station, and we went up there. Oh, yeah, we went up there, and, uh, I brought. Metal stake with me and.
Think. Think. It's all granite.
Oh.
Well, that's why I was laughing when they came in here.
They, they gotta be blasting it.
Oh, they have to be.
Oh, I, I haven't seen any indication.
He keeps pushing back his. His inspections for setbacks and puddings and stuff.
That's all I could think of when they came in here, do you have any idea what you're getting into with that lot?
And they're all from New Jersey. The contractors.
They're not from the granite state, huh?
There's always a ledge clause. In your, in your, uh, building estimates. Usually it's, um.
I don't know why they're all from New Jersey.
They're usually it's three thousand dollars.
Hotel hall of them.
Three thousand dollars a day.
Cause they're running out of space down there and they're. Moving up, they developing up here.
I have Jersey barriers instead of signs.
It's, uh, New Hampshire's much. More bus- uh, business friendly than, than New Jersey is, really is.
Cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, well, at the ledge, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit, there's quite a bit of topsoil piled up there, I wonder where that's going.
It's probably not, I had someone call, they wanted it.
Can't take, you can't take home out of town.
Yeah.
And they got, they've been excavating.
Oh, they what?
They got an excavation plan.
Yeah, but they can't leave topsoil out of town. Too legal. Has to stay in town.
They can sell it, but it can't leave town. Many towns have that bylaw.
Well, actually, it's a state law.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. And no topsoil is allowed to leave town, it's because people stripping property.
Capital.
Yeah. I, I mean, the granite and all that?
Yeah.
That can go.
You should have seen when they did Walgreens.
Oh, really?
So they, they bought it, and then all we're gonna do it. Really scrum was a little soft. So they start putting some pilings in, they thought they just need like five, ten pilings. They put the piling in, twenty foot piling, they just pushed it down. Then they had another one onto it and pushed it down. And they kept doing that, and they kept, they couldn't hit anything, and then they ended up with. I don't know, must be forty or sixty pilings in the ground there to hold that building up, and they're all like sixty foot pilings. It's peat, it's a solid peat bog.
Oh, wow.
Can you imagine? So.
You haven't approved the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Four times a meeting.
Or adjourned.
All right, minutes.
I proved strong.
I think that I did a long time ago.
Yeah. It was. So these.
I did, I did, uh.
A long time ago, too?
Yeah, a long time ago. When the earth was green.
Let me see if I. No, I don't. I don't have any ones that I've read.
Is it blue nest or loon nesting? Around loon nesting area?
What page do you want, John?
Uh, oh, uh, page four. The, uh. Exceptions. Posting of the point, roping off air around. Loon nesting. Area. Those.